They've graduated kids, it just has taken them a little bit longer. And by the old formula, they again have a very high rate. Virtual program, a little bit lower, and again, we're talking about people who take a little bit longer than the traditional four years to get through the program.
Could I ask one quick question?
Yeah, absolutely.
On a prior slide, for your migrant workers.
That one?
The percentage, yeah.
Yes.
I'm just curious, will we ever get very high on that because of that subcategory of students?
It's challenging to do that, but you can see we have grown. We've doubled the number of graduates in the last five years. The group size, the number of migrants we have goes up and down. The number who persist to graduation goes up and down. There are some things we can do through the migrant program to help support them, but it's certainly a challenge because you're having people come in with different levels of background and preparation.
Darren, can I add?
Please.
It also depends on when their migrant status started. With migrant eligible students, their status is only eligible for three years. And so if you have a student that's eligible, their eligibility ended like eighth grade, when they started high school, they no longer listen as migrants.
Good point.
And Patrick Dennis is right though too, is that they're very mobile, depending on the type of work that their parents are doing. And so a lot of times, you know, they leave before they graduate.
That's why I was curious about that, together with just how we keep the numbers on it. They may leave before we're able to, or by the very nature, they take longer to graduate. And that's what's frustrating about that standard being so absolute that it takes years.
Correct.
Can you go along with that? Can you explain, I know we've had a presentation last year and when the formula changed. Can you kind of explain to some people who may not know?
Sure.
What the new formula is?
Let me start with the old formula. The old formula, in very basic, simple terms, looked at the number of graduates and it divided it by the number of people that you started out and you co-worked with in high school. You have to add, subtract, but at the most simple level, that's what it was. But the number of graduates, it didn't care in the formula how long that took. So if we had a five-year, a six-year, however long, eight-year person, as long as they persisted and stayed in school and graduated, they counted toward the graduation rate. The new rate, or the new formula, is a four-year rate. How many do you start your freshman year with and how many graduate then four years later? So it takes out the students who take a little bit longer to get a diploma than four years. So does that answer your question?
I had a question about the ELL category.
Yes.
Is it correct that the students who are listed in that category are in ELL status during their senior year?
During their high school career. Steve, are you, am I speaking correctly there?
Yeah, sometimes during their career where they, if they were categorized as that.
Sometimes during their high school career, they were categorized.
During high school. So what this is showing, that more than a quarter of our high school graduates were or are in ELL status during high school. So that's a pretty commendable thing.
Yeah, it is. It speaks volumes about the work that the high school staff, ESL staff, teachers in general, are doing with kids from different backgrounds. Last slide I want to share with you before I turn it over to the schools. I compared our graduation rate with the most recent rate that's been released for the United States as a whole and for the state of Kansas. If it's bold, it's a little hard to see on this slide, but every single one of the numbers here under U.S. is bold, and that indicates that our numbers in each of those subcategories are higher than the U.S. average. Under Kansas, we're bold under white and under special ed. We're above the state average in those two categories. We're very close, by the way, in the other three. But, so lots of positive to take from this. I want to turn it over now to Mr. Ron and his team to talk briefly about what's happening at the alternative program.
Greg's going to give you all a couple of letters from graduates. And I've got a brief PowerPoint, and then we're going to get this over to some people who are using the place and people who have been successful with us. Our mission statement here. Some of the things that are going on in the building right now, just very briefly, we've got the Auburn High School, TEP, Virtual Academy, Compass is up there working, Communities and Schools is working with us. We've got Kansas Kids Gear Up through Wichita State, Family Impact Team, Trio ETS is up there. We're also hosting Big Brothers, Big Sisters, who work with kids across the district, but we also have some of our kids in our building. Some of our pictures, we've got kids earning scholarships, making campus visits. We've adopted kind of a model here in the last year. We're kind of switching from an emphasis only on diploma to an emphasis on what comes next. And that's what we're acting upon. Our assumption is if you join us, we're eventually going to get you a diploma. We'll come back to that eventually in a little bit here. Our mascot is the phoenix. We've got some of our first graduates there on the right. Another slide of graduates. This thing's about graduation with the 21 credit program that you guys always put in last year. We're catching up a lot of people. The first year that we did this, there were a lot of people who had dropped out between 21 credits state requirement and the requirements that were going on already. So we're picking them up here. Some of our students. We filled the Methodist Hall last year, all the way to the back, standing room only for graduation, for our 31 grads. And we've actually, I talked to Urs, one of the reasons he's going to let us just use their setup right after they're done with it the next day, so that we'll have enough chairs this time. Should have plenty. There they are. And out of the 31 that we had, what Darren was just saying to you, out of the 31, I think by the new method, only eight would count. The rest of them still graduated, they still got diplomas, but they don't fall in that rigid four-year window. And that's one of the reasons why we're so thankful for the support we get. Thank you not just for what you do for us, but thank you for what you're doing for us in particular, to understand what we're up against and what we're doing. The Communities and Schools people, not person, where is he? Can you stand up either? Communities and Schools has been an integral part of our program since we started. Mr. Mendoza is bringing in people from out in the community, speaking with large portions of our student body at once. We do Savior grades nights through them. He does tutoring. We've so far this year had in medical, mechanical engineering, and computer science, people come and talk and start getting our kids oriented towards continuing with a program in that after they graduate. Student Council's having quite a bit of fun. We've got food drives going on, we've done that. They orient our new students, we've done fundraisers. We've got one coming up this week, Wednesday, five to eight at Freddy's. So come on down, get a burger, help us out. We had a couple of fun nights, we brought in colleges, that's just so far. We will also have a college day, if you will, where we'll bring in all kinds of people from around the state and outside the state. We've had them as far afield as Wyoming Tech and talk to our kids. We've got one student that's gone on to Wyoming Tech. Food drive, kids getting ready to do some Christmas activities over on the right. So far this year, we had 31 graduates this last year, 23 our first year. This year so far, we've got 12 who are ready to go, and we're going to get some more here very shortly as they clean up from the last nine weeks. We are on quarter systems, so what you do at Garden City High School, 18 weeks every other day, you do with us nine weeks every day, four at a time. Same net result, but it gives us a lot more flexibility in it. Our graduation is May 9th, GCCC out there. And one of the team put this on at the bottom, although some numbers may not count, we know what really counts, and what really counts are these young people over here. And I wanted to get this done quick and turn it over to you guys. I want you to just come on over here. Almost nobody bites here. And I'm going to let you introduce yourselves to everybody, just very briefly talk about what the place did for you, and now's your chance. If you ever wanted to say something, you know, whether you were with us. Go for it.
I'm Grant Brungart. One of the first classes to graduate from the alternative. I would like to say that when you do think of the alternative, most people say, oh, it's where the troublemakers go. And honestly, no, it's not. I mean, we've all had histories before. I've had one. I got past it and went to school. Getting a little emotional because graduating was pretty big for me. I mean, I wear my classroom every day, and I did it for my grandpa, people couldn't see me. And having a single mom and an older sister there by my side every time, it feels great. The school was really helpful. I mean, no matter what I went through, Mr. Ron was there, even the teachers, I got really close with some teachers. Even with school, no matter what it was, I'd go to a teacher or Mr. Ron, and I'd talk to him. And even outside, I do mixed martial arts, and I, a real teacher, gave me real good, ready, trained for a fight, and I won my last fight because I had his help. Joe, he helps us. He helped us go to different college visits. He helped me get ready to go to the college here, even though I haven't continued my college education, which I plan to. It's wonderful. I mean, just go and see how the school is, and it's fantastic. And I would like to take the honor of being class representative of 2013 and our phoenix mascot. My drawing was elected, so it's a big honor as well. I'd just like to say thank you.
Thank you.
Let me say, worth that. I'd like to thank Mr. Ron for giving me the chance to go there, because the other high school I struggled, and I felt like I was falling behind. But at some point towards the end, I really wanted to feel like dropping out. I felt like I couldn't catch up. But, because it was hard, I had problems, family and medical devil, and my grandma pushed me through it, pushed me through it, told me keep doing it, so I kept doing it for her. And I heard about the alternative, and I took the chance and went and talked to Mr. Ron about it. I'm glad I did, because my dad gave me the chance. I probably couldn't achieve it at the other high school, and it really pushed me. I even graduated a year before my class, thanks to it. It was hard, hard, but as long as I set my mind to it, I could do it. And it was like the same as Grant. I was with a single mother, raised the three, so it was real hard on her, so I didn't have much, but I tried to make it happen. I'm also one of the first graduates as Grant, and I really surprised myself and my family of what I accomplished there, thanks to the help of the staff and all of them. Because for all I knew, I was just going to drop out, because I didn't feel like I was going to make it. But thanks to this, I had the chance and the support, and I got it done, a year early. And I just want to thank them. I'm still continuing my education here at the Garden City Community College as we speak for fire science. I hope to continue with it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Sarai Hernandez. I want to thank you all for giving me the opportunity to come and speak about my experience at the Garden City Alternative Education Center, also known among the state alternative. My experience at the Garden City Alternative Education Center convinced me that it is a great school for the youth, especially if they're having problems in high school with its peer pressure bullying, problems at home, or even being unable to concentrate. Having been a part of the alternative education center, I noticed that this school accommodates all the students' needs. Not only do you get to work at your own pace, but also it's the place where you strictly go to finish your high school education. The alternative gives you the chance to focus on you and to better yourself. For a member of students, it is a second chance, a place to start off fresh. However, a great number of people in the community feel that the alternative is the place where the bad kids go, or as if it's the last resort for some. This is not the case. Indeed, some of the students that are coming to the alternative center do have passed and have done things that are not perceived as good, but who also say that. Who says that no one can change? Take me, for example. I left the Garden City High School my second semester as a junior and began classes at the alternative. The Garden City Alternative Education Center gave me the opportunity to focus on myself. While attending the alternative, I knew every morning exactly what I needed to get done and how close I was to finishing school. Looking at my progress, it was a positive reinforcement. Knowing I was going to school just to do me was the biggest motivation. It was a luxury for me to be able to get my classes done at my own pace. Each of the, I'm sorry, each of us classified as successful for me, and in my eyes, I have succeeded. Now that I have completed my high school education, I see myself as a successful young woman. I will walk in May, and I have started attending the Garden City Community College as a full-time student. My current plan is to obtain a bachelor's and attend law school. To become a lawyer, I want to thank the school board for giving us the opportunity for a second chance. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Marla DePry, and I recently started going to the alternative. I went, started last December. And like I said, the community, like they think of the alternative as different than most, but when I went there, I was nervous at first, but we all became, it seemed more like a family. You'd get close to everyone, there wasn't very many people there. But I've seen the numbers grow, and I've seen the number of students like wanting to achieve things. And I've never felt like more involved in a school than I have since I started going, since I went to the alternative. And I have recently graduated, I finished in October, so I'll be walking in May. And being part of Stuko and being actually a part of the activities in the school has really helped me want, motivated, makes me motivated to finish and to get everything done. So that was a big part of me graduating, helped a lot, being there and having more support. And the teachers, they more one-on-one with the smaller classes. And so that helped a lot. And, all right. He's going to be handing out some bracelets. The senior class, we voted on some this year to show our school pride and just so that people can, in the community, to know we're different from the high school, and we have our own mascot, and we will succeed too. It's motivation for seniors too. Thank you.
Guys, want to come on here, just in case, do you have any questions at all for our graduates? I'll get out there. Anybody?
Just kudos and props, awesome job.
Do you have any idea how inspirational it is to hear from you guys? It's great. What we're doing is graduating responsible citizens, and that's exactly what you become. And you do matter, and you do count, and success is what you see in the mirror. You guys should be very proud. And thanks to Mr. Ron and your support team. It's awesome.
I think Mr. Morales. Thank you, guys.
Good luck following that, Mr. Morales. Can I make a remark before Mr. Ron steps down? I guess I wanted to say thank you for my day job as well. Because I can tell you, when we discuss virtual school, the only one the court will accept, USC 457.
Well, and a lot of that sat later, right back there, she hasn't got out yet.
Yeah. And we want to thank you for all that you do for the kids. We really appreciate it.
Thank you for all the help you guys have been, we have some cannot do it wrong. Thank you.
You know, I want to say too, that kind of on that earlier topic, I hope we never lose that tally and inclusion of graduates of your school from high school in Garden City, because they did graduate. We shouldn't have dropped that tally, because I think the community's successful, those kids are successful. So what if they took a little longer than four years? I hope we always keep that in the tally.
So we tell them, once we get you, we're going to get you through. Thank you all very much.
We want to thank the board again for giving us time to present this graduation rate to you. Again, kudos to Mr. Ron and what they do, the students that were not successful in our building. We do want to thank them. This should be important to every board, graduation rate across the nation, anybody. But if you'll just look at some of the numbers here, our white graduation rate, our Hispanic, Asian, other, and then we talked about our ESL. You talk about closing the achievement gap, guys? Whoa, that is closing the achievement gap. Because if you look at that first slide that Mr. Dennis was showing you, it was 58 percent of our Hispanics were graduating just a few years ago. We have shut that rate down. Our ESL population, what we're saying, these kids in our ESL department are knocking the top out of it. They're just doing an exceptional job. So I do want to thank all our teachers for the work that they do, because it's not just the administrators, it's organizing everything. I want to thank the younger kids in the younger schools for what they're doing, because we are receiving better students every year, and that makes our jobs easier once we get into high school. Except that's when it starts counting. That's when the clock starts, that freshman year. I want to thank Mr. Kip. He's the guy behind the plan here, doing the PowerPoint, has done an exceptional job with it, so I want you to know that he is responsible for that, just in case there is a miscalculation. I told everybody, five minutes is what they have, everybody that speaks.
I'm sorry to interrupt your presentation, but every time we've had kids come before this board and speak to us, they've always come around and shook the board's hand. I think these guys overwhelmed us this year.
I agree. I agree.
That's my fault. I apologize. Thank you.
Congratulations. Good work.
Mr. Morales, I'm sorry for interrupting your presentation.
Well, I was talking about time, and you cut it short, but we're doing pretty good there.
Hang on, we're reducks, just wait four minutes.
I told everybody that's presenting on my staff that they have five minutes, so that includes me also, so I'm trying to move as fast as I can. Here's what I want you to look at here. This is Garden City High School graduation rate, this is the four-year graduation rate. And I'm going to do this just for sake of what it does. If you look at this, it doesn't look very good really, because you see the dip, and we tried to explain to you what that dip was, and so we said, okay, you can't count anymore after four years. So I'm going to do this, this is the visual for you. Now, look at that chart. That look a little different? Guys, that is climbing a mountain. That is climbing a mountain in a very short period of time. We have increased graduation rate 25% in five years. Five years. The last year, 8%. I can, I dare to say, there's no other school in the state of Kansas that has done anything near this, anything like this. If they can, I'd like to see their numbers. Because the federal government doesn't let you play games anymore. The federal government stopped the game that everybody was playing in that year. Now, everything has to be accurate, there is no way to manipulate numbers, and that is what our staff has done at the high school. It's incredible, very incredible. Some of the other things I want to talk about here, reasons for it, and this is thanks to you all, board, and the community and everybody else. The new building, guys, the new building has made an incredible difference. We had 58 doors that kids could go out in the old building, and they just left when they wanted to. And there was no way of stopping unless you put a guard at every door. Our closed campus with a one-way in, one-way out, knowing who's coming and who's leaving is incredible. Closed lunch that we did that made me very popular in the community for a long time with students and parents, is showing, this is showing what all this has done for us. You know, we took the heat because we knew it was good for kids, and when you do it, it's good for our community. Supervision, I can stand at one point in this new building, and I can look down this hall, and I can look down that hall, and I can see the number of students that are not making it to class in time, which the old building, we were two separate buildings, could not do that. The visibility in our building really helps. I can tell you right now, between classes, other than first or second period, when they're still getting out of cars and coming sometimes, I can count less than four people being late to class out of 2,000 kids. That's not happening everywhere. I'm impressed, and I'm there every day, and I'm looking at them and watching. So just some of the things, the climate and the culture of the building, the three Rs that we talk about all the time, we really work on those. The relationships between teachers and students, our teachers are really caught on to that and know that it makes a difference when you build that relationship with that kid. Our relationship with teacher to teacher and teacher to administration has gotten so much better. The culture and the climate in our building is just incredible right now. The relationship with our parents and contacting our parents has really increased. Shared leadership. We have made more people responsible and accountable in our building, not just the principals, but leaders, teacher leaders in our building. And this is why these things happen, because when we first heard the numbers, we're like, how does that happen? You know, it just doesn't happen by mistake. There's a plan, there's a design and a direction to make that happen, and we've done a great job at the high school. The alternative school and transfers, I can tell you, the virtual school's made a difference. The alternative, you've just seen, the alternative school makes a difference, and that has helped our numbers also, because they are taking those kids that need a little extra attention and help to graduate. So they have helped us, again. The next person that's going to speak, I think five minutes are over, I'm not too sure, is Mr. Nordby, and he's going to talk about some other things that we think contributed to this graduation rate.
One of the big factors that contributes to the graduation rate is the academy structure. Our academy structure, we believe, leads to deeper personal relationships between students and staff, among the staff of each academy, and also allows for real deeper, more personalized instruction. Our smaller learning communities mean that students will have the same core instruction multiple times over their high school career. Those teachers know the students, their strengths, their weaknesses, their interests. They're in the same academy for a reason, they have similar likes, dislikes, what they're interested in for possible career or advanced study. So that allows us to get really deep with our instruction. It also allows closer access to counselors, who've done a great job identifying students with needs and providing services and intervention for them, both personal and academic. So our smaller learning communities have really done a great job as a factor, developing those as a factor for our success. It's similar to the looping concept in elementary. You get to know those relationships, you get to know the students, build the relationships, and that leads to better learning. With that though, it allows for interest and engagement to really be a big part of the instructional process. It allows us to, although our kids will get the same core concept, and English too, you're going to read the same anchor text, but our academy structure then allows us to do other activities that will present the material in a little bit different way. It allows us to expand the learning, to develop real-world applications, and we do it across the school in our academy structure. And trade in health, we have a partnership with the University of And, uh, trade and health, we have a partnership with the University of Kansas to do, uh, night at the lab, the science experiments that the students were doing and to get a chance then to go up and to visit the University of Kansas. Those kids are interested in health occupations. Uh, Habitat for Humanity, our, our, our trades academy partnered with Habitat for Humanity and took the classroom learning to a real site, to deepen the learning. Uh, Garden City High School showcase happening each semester with students in the Arts and Communications Academy presenting all of their material for a broader audience. Uh, mock trial in, uh, trade and health, where they, uh, partnered with our Law and Public Safety, uh, Department. And they partnered with, was it, uh, education, our education and family, uh, class, classes and, and presented a mock trial. So we do a lot of those type of deeper, deeper learning, uh, youth entrepreneurs, where we partner students with business leaders to learn about, you know, all different types of, uh, business strategies and relationships and, and just the ins and outs of businesses that, well, our students wouldn't normally get a chance to be involved in. Uh, the academy structure allows us to take a three hundred eighty-five thousand square foot building and make it functionally smaller for our students and our staff and to, you know, enhance the learning process. Okay, uh, as Mr. Morales says, you know, the, the learning really starts and our graduation really builds, graduation rate really builds on what's happening at the elementary, intermediate, middle school level. But as far as Garden City High School's concerned, the foundation is the ninth grade academy. Uh, in the ninth grade academy, it's about not only the academic excellence, but personal discovery. Trying to figure out which of these other academies and careers and, and educational interests that, that you've got, where you may go from here and setting the foundation for students. Uh, in our ninth grade academy, all of our students go through a class called freshman success, where they learn about the importance of education, what options there are out in, in the world and inside of Garden City High School. While we are physically separated from the other academies, we're down at the end of the hallway. Uh, you know, freshmen do get a chance to get out and explore and to see what else is out there and what might interest them in another academy and, and build relationships with other faculty members. Uh, the career pipeline, interest inventory as part of freshman success helps students identify and crystallize a little bit of their thoughts as far as career and education, where they may go from here and develop a plan to study for the next three years at the high school. Uh, each student then, uh, is screened and students with academic needs are placed into MTSS sections, so they get the educational support that they need. That, uh, we get a chance to intervene as early as we can at the high school with extra support. That leads to our academic big success. Over the last two years, in our building structure, ninety-five percent of our freshmen have left the freshman academy on track to graduate in four years. Last year, out of five hundred eighty approximate freshmen, we had, check my numbers here, Mr. Gates, twenty-two? Yeah, it was less than twenty-five students. I believe it was, the number's twenty-two that were, had less than six credits, which is what they needed to move on and to be on track to graduate. And that's, that's a tremendous success for us, I think.
Okay, um, I guess I have the next section. Um, one of the things that we need to do in order to increase the graduation rate is really identify, uh, the students that may need some additional help in order to do that. So we, we have some, uh, student evaluation systems that we're continually improving, uh, in order to identify the needs of the students. The first thing that we, we focus on with students is, as we look at their academic success is an early warning system. Um, there's three criteria that we look at in this report. It gives us an idea of what students are, uh, that we need to, uh, add additional support services for. Uh, failing grades, uh, basically when we run a report, we look at those students who are failing two or more grades. Absences, if they're absent from class quite a bit of time, I think it's, uh, six unexcused absences per semester and that's coincides with our truancy, uh, material and regulations. And then grade point average and look at their overall success over the time that they've been in this school. If we see something that we need to, uh, identify or a student that we need to identify and, and discuss some support systems with, we use the early warning system. In addition to that, we look at SRI, Scholastic Reading Index or IND, um, the AIMS Web, uh, which is used in elementary and middle. And we also use that in the early stages of high school as well to identify kids' needs, uh, in terms of their academic success. Uh, this should say SMI instead of SIMS with all the acronyms, got a little confused there. Uh, that's the Scholastic Math Index or IND, and we'll be using that in addition, uh, to the, uh, SRI to gauge their competencies and their skills in mathematics. So once we can get those students identified, then we go to adding supplemental support services. And of all of the schools that I've seen, as you walk down the hall of Garden City High School, you'll see more support services than anywhere else. I, I can't imagine another high school in Kansas that has anything comparable to this. And this isn't it. This is just a list of things that we put together that were relatively obvious in terms of support services at, at the high school. We have individual differentiated instruction by teachers. We have the ELL department doing what they do to improve student success. We have the, uh, special education department, differentiating, individualizing, getting those kids to do what they need to do to graduate as well. But in addition to all that, that happens every day, we have services that we can identify as, as contacting, making contact and influencing students' achievement. Avid, um, advancement via individual determination. Hundred and sixty-four students are directly related to the Avid program. But Avid is a skill set, is a, a program affects many more than that. We teach those strategies to the teachers. We teach strategies to students in order to be more successful in the classroom. Not just a case managed student from an Avid instructor. Communities and schools, we have a hundred and six, I believe, uh, students that are, that use the community and schools classroom as, as case managed students. The additional students are those that are involved in things like Save the Grade Nights. Uh, E twenty twenty Agenuity, that's our, um, virtual credit recovery, uh, computer classes. About a hundred students per semester enrolled in those classes and eighty-five additional students in the night school program. Uh, Jobs for Americans Graduates, the number for this semester is forty-six with a capacity of a hundred. So that's another support service that's growing, another additional benefit to students, um, an additional support service for those students who don't get support somewhere else. And it's important to note that these students are not the same students. In some cases, there are, uh, repetitions in their support. But for the most part, we try to identify which kids are getting help through communities and school and get a different group of kids in the Jobs for Americans Graduates. Uh, JRTC is another one, uh, in which we have about two hundred and eleven students enrolled in JRTC programs. They can get credit in the class, but they also get additional support after school and through the program itself. Uh, MTSS, uh, we have two hundred and ninety-five students who are using some sort of a support system in addition to these others. And that could be a mentoring class for reading, could be a mentoring time for mathematics. It could be additional time, uh, where they need help in whatever it is, science, social studies, et cetera. Uh, we have night school, uh, about a hundred night school students, uh, are enrolled, uh, that, plus the eighty-five that are night school E twenty twenty. So we have night school from about three forty-five to five fifteen. It's essentially a ninth hour of the day. Two nights a week and then they go through the semester and get the credit. Um, student achievement team, the SAT student, uh, students throughout the academies. This gives us an opportunity for our counselors and, uh, the teachers that are involved in SAT to meet with students individually, to get parent meetings, uh, to attack those issues that those students need to, uh, to improve upon. And then we have semester school, uh, which, these are the numbers from last year, or last, uh, last spring. Three hundred and three students attended semester school and they recovered three hundred and eighty-four credits. It's a two-week period of time in which students who have achieved at least a fifty percent in that semester can be involved in a two-week recovery opportunity with teachers after school. Uh, we just started this semester's, semester school this evening. Um, I can't remember the numbers. Did we get any at, uh?
Um, I had a, just the first night alone, just under two hundred enrolled and we allow enrollment today and tomorrow. I think we'll break records in semester school.
I think it was something around five hundred credits can be recovered in those students. And then Trio, our Educational Talent Search, uh, not only helps students through tutoring in our Educational Career Center, uh, but also involves students in the opportunity to look at colleges and universities so that inspire them to improve as well. Uh, another contributing factor to the increased graduation rate is just student activities and extracurricular involvement. Research shows if kids are involved in the school, whether it's academic, activity, athletics, they tend to graduate. They're involved, they wanna be there. It's an anchor for them to come to school. And so Garden City High School has quite a few things for students to be involved with. One of the new aspects of, uh, involvement for the new high school is our Stuco. And that has something to do with the academy structure as well. Originally, there were about twenty-five participants in Stuco. Now that we have four academies and we have a student council per academy, we have about a hundred students involved. And then there's still a, a group or committee of students that help to, uh, to coordinate all of the activities that student council does across the, across the building. Co-curricular activities, hopefully you've come out and seen the theater production, the music, um, orchestra, choir. Uh, all of those things are improved, getting more and more kids involved in various things. Have to talk up the theater because they're in, uh, increasing the number of productions, increasing the number of kids involved in those productions. They're gonna have a musical every year rather than every other. They're having a variety of different types of presentations uh, and, uh, performances for people to come see. And so it's, it not only helps the students be involved, but parents and the community as well. And then clubs, we have thirty-seven clubs, sponsored clubs with at least fifteen members, uh, students in those clubs. And that's six new clubs.